Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business. As I was about to say, we have one thing that came to our attention. It's been before, I think both Parks and Public Works is that the roof on the Forge Fitness Building needs to be replaced, and we would like to move on that sooner than later. So with that said, I guess I'd entertain a motion to make the Rec Center Emergency Roof Repair a 2024 project in the city's capital facility plan. It's currently in the 2527 plan, and request the mayor bring a budget amendment back to the council as soon as possible. Would anybody like to move that?
Move.
Or support and move and support it. Any discussion or questions on that one?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
So through the general fund, I think over, I'm gonna say, three or four year period, and we will shift some additional funding that we will get in other areas. I have a plan in mind that shifts some funding around to generate approximately $200,000 for the general fund that we can then-
They can have our fluoride money.
So where are we borrowing the money from?
So, to be more specific, a couple of years ago, we asked, well, when we approved a couple of police officers, we were gonna use $357 for that. We have not done that, and now I plan to start using $357 to fund these officers. That's how.
And $357 is the-
Yeah, no, $357 is the 1/10th sales tax, safety sales tax. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Thank you very much for that. We'll come back with a proposal soon. All right, all right, discussion. I guess I'll open this up. I just wanna say before we start, though, we've heard a lot of comment over the last couple of weeks. We have a very united council in many, many things. We may not have that on this one. I guess I wanna come in as friends and I'm gonna leave as friends. So there's probably gonna be four happy people and four not so, three not so happy people, but we'll see how it all plays out. I don't know which way. But I encourage our council to work together as we work on this particular issue of fluoride in our community. So I thank you for, I thank the audience too for so much participation in the last few weeks, and now it's up to the council to have a discussion amongst ourselves. So where do you wanna go?
Are we all gonna have an opportunity to speak?
Yeah.
Just wanted to start wandering around.
All right, you can.
I know councilman Bodie wants to talk.
You think so? Well, I'll fill the void in a minute. So I have kind of a prepared statement, and then I might add a little, a couple of things. But this is not a new subject. It's been a long journey. It actually started 15 years ago under a former Public Works director when we were, when we were designing our new water plant. And his question was, and why are we doing this? Because there is beginning to be some information that maybe there is some problem in the fluoride injection into water systems. And there wasn't a lot of information, but it was a question. So then the question was, well, shall we just leave that part out of the bid? Well, we'd already, it was $182,000, and so it was like, well, we already, the bid is out, so it's gonna be there, and if we get to a point where it is not a good idea, we can just turn it off. So we went through with it. Well, then, a few years go by, and more information comes out, and then one of my fellow counselors says to me in December of '22, "Why are we doing this? Because there is so much information coming out." And so I said, "Well, we probably should look into that, because it probably haven't had a discussion since 1959, and I think we owe it to our people to find out what's really going on, because that's a lot of years." And so there's new, this new information and studies have been made, and to date, there's even more, but there's over 259 that have been documented that most have, and they're very credible, studies by universities, toxicology labs, health organizations, and the majority are beginning to have questions about the continued ingestion of that material. Now, there's no argument with the dental community about topically applied, that's not what we're doing here. And so that's a different subject. But this is ingestion of a fluoride substance. And when you get even, there's nine countries left in the world that will allow it, out of 192 countries. And most of them consider that ingestion a toxic substance, and so that's just, that's not due to science. This is credible people from all around the world. Well, there's, there's questions, okay. So it's apparent that we should take a look at that, because this information comes out. And so that's what we decided to do. So we went through this process, and as we all know, the state put on some new requirements, and that was fine, because it gives the public 90 days to consider it and input and so on. So my conclusion, my conclusion is, if it's only, it's only allowed in nine out of 192 countries anymore, there's a problem that, you know, and so number two, it's not a necessary process for our water filtration in the performance of our water plant. It's an addition, which is more of a medical procedure. So should the city be involved in that? My opinion is no. And then, and it's also about informed consent. That seems to be a big issue in the last several years, especially around the country. And if you look at, in the last several months, actually, you can go on and find some of these meetings. There are big water systems on the east coast that have just deleted that from their systems, and one of the big issues is informed consent. It's not a necessary process for water filtration, so that should be up to the individual. And technically, it's not, that material should not be ingested. It's for topical application, and even, and that's for the Poison Control Center, because it's, as we've all heard the testimony, it's advantageous topically applied, and we all know that. And when you put all this together, and then the fact that we as a city have a serious responsibility to do no harm, and that's in our processes and out of the abundance of caution, I feel we need to remove it. There are many districts and cities around the country that, several this year, and many of them in the last few years, that are doing that because of the same concerns. And I guess, and finally, I mean, I could do this for an hour, I'm not gonna do it. Finally, as a constitutional adherent, I believe that these medical decisions should be left up to the individual and not by our city or our government. We have to do certain things for a sanitary water system. This is not one of them. And if a person would like to have that, there are many ways to get that, but I don't think it's the city's responsibility to be doing that.
Mr. Bell?
Well, I find myself smack dab in the middle of three good friends on each side, and we have had some excellent discussions. Things come out about 50/50. When you start looking at the way people have commented, people have written, it comes out about 50/50. And I would say this, I very much appreciate the dental community to give us. It's apparent to me that they are hard believers in the fact that I accept, and that is that fluoride is good for teeth. Fluoride causes, causes tooth decay? I don't know. You don't end up getting it. It, it, it's an injury, and they are going against their own financial benefit by saying, "Hey, keep fluoride in the water." So I think in the world of, you know, in my world of law enforcement, I come back to probable cause. There is probable cause to believe that fluoride does good things for the water, for people. I do think that, and I'm grateful for that firsthand experience of dentists saying, "In my practice, I see this," okay? So I appreciate that. And what I was hoping for on the other side, and I let people know this, I would say that if fluoride is bad for you, that somebody from some practice somewhere, some neurologist, some, somebody, you know, a cancer doctor, someone would have been able to come forward and say, "I see this from people," and then even, you know, "Anytime." I didn't see that. But I would have to say that it would be foolish as well to believe that there is no question, that there are not questions out there about the validity, the safety, on, other than tooth decay, safety towards people. There is reasonable suspicion to believe that there could be things that fluoride causes. And I don't, if I were voting back in the day, the freedom-loving person that I am says that government stays out of my water, stays out of everything, has to stay out of, get involved in only the things it should get involved in, and stay out of my life for the rest of it. We have to have certain guidelines, speeding for rules of law and for public safety. I would not say that fluoride reaches that mark. Fluoride is good to have in the water. It is the cheapest way to get that done. The ADA gave us some information that said that the average kid is gonna get two more cavities, 25% more cavities. And the paper that that one guy gave us, we got it from Seattle that drove up here to give it to us, said that on average, kids would get two more cavities. That's just not enough for me to look at somebody and say, "You're gonna take it no matter what." I think that if you want it, go get it. I'm not keeping you from it. We're just keeping you from the cheapest, most economical way for that to happen. And I accept that responsibility. But I can't accept the responsibility of saying, you know, "I'm gonna pick on Lori over there, your friend Lori, guys wanna do it with your daughter? Lori, you have to consume this or get a $1,000 unit to take it out." I don't think that's right. One of the strongest testimonies that I heard was fluoride treats the person, and chlorine and alum and the other things that we put in water treat the water. We have to treat the water. We have to have it safe. Fluoride doesn't make it safe. Fluoride makes it, I would probably dare say better, because it probably does more good than harm, in my estimation, but I'm not willing to make that choice for other people. So I fall on the taking fluoride and removing it from the system.
You know, after looking at all sides, I came to one conclusion. I'm not a flipping scientist at all. It's too difficult. It seems to me the best science that wins is the science that does exactly opposite of what anybody believes, which got me exactly nowhere in a big circle. So then I have nothing to rely on. As many of these gentlemen up here do, I have nothing to rely on but my own gut instincts. My own gut instincts tell me it shouldn't be. It's been a good thing, I like leave. I haven't seen anybody come forward, there hasn't been one medical person able to come forward and say, "Linden has additional this." Even though we have 77 years of this in our drinking water, nobody can still push to it. While it's true, many nations don't have it in their drinking water. They do put it in their salt. They put it in their milk. It naturally occurs. So they don't need it. It's not necessary. We do. We have Borwater. So my vote now would be to keep it. If, depending on what motion is, it would be for or against it. But if the motion is to remove, I would be opposed to that motion.
That's surprising.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for caring enough about the issue to come out and talk at the past, a couple of council meetings. And the way that the discussion happened was very civil. I was quite concerned it wasn't gonna be after some interactions last fall. So I really appreciate that. I fall on the side of councillor Biss. Well, there's been compelling evidence presented about choice and those type of things. I think the common good continuing to fluoridate our water outweighs those concerns.
I suspect that.
No.
As you can, we were just sitting in the front row last time, talking about us being legally responsible. If we continue to fluoridate our water, I'm as equally concerned about us getting sued. If we stop fluoridating our water-
It's not the truth.
Rate of cavities indeed would increase here in town. So I would like to see us do, continue doing this, but I'm also willing to look at other ideas, such as what councillor Walrath had, where we put in, put in several places around town where we-
It's so stupid.
-get fluorinated water for their, with their, you know, city Linden water consumption card, for lack of a better word at this point.
Wow, so disappointing.
And I think that would be a nice compromise to start with. And I do need to get some scientific information on how much interest there's in these. Councillor Bell referenced, you know, the public testimony, the written testimony having been a project of 50/50. The private comments I've gotten, I mean personally, and I haven't said where I stand on this issue publicly at all, but have been 10 to 1 in favor of keeping the fluoride in water. And I'm getting comments every couple of days from people. So there's a strong majority potentially that feels that we should continue doing this, and I think it's in the best interest of our city and particularly the disadvantaged youth that live here that we can continue to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Colby? Okay, I actually put this up about two weeks ago after we had our final public hearings. And since that time, we have received a lot of input also, but I would rather comment on what we all received as a council at one time instead of being taken apart, you might say. Anyway, so I'm gonna read this, because I, it's, you guys did a pretty good job here of going off the cuff. But after reviewing the public comments, and this was done on May 22nd, so again, I wanna thank all of those who participated in providing materials and testimony regarding keeping or removing fluoride from Linden's water. Yeah, we received many articles, books on the subject, plus we heard testimony of almost 100 individuals, and we had a signed petition that covered many people, and I can't ignore that. I was impressed with the general politeness of the audience. I wanna congratulate all of you for that. There was no shouting or any, you know, or clapping. I've been at places where that has taken place, and I'm glad that that did not happen. I did take issue, though, with the individual who felt that the council should not waste their time on this topic and just dismiss it. And I did not agree with the person who characterized those opposed to fluoride as being un-researched and described them as fringe conspiracy theorists. This is just not true. We heard great testimony. We heard and read that the use of fluoride is for the common good and beneficial. We also heard that the topical application was good and it's available, readily available. Using fluoride toothpaste helps, that's why I put that up here. But it comes with a warning on the box, and if swallowed, you need to get medical help or call the Poison Control Center right away. This brings us to the issue of ingesting fluoride. A real concern is that fluoride is considered a medicine which we are dispensing without consent and freedom of choice. You know, we all drink it. Linden's water has its fluoride in it, and so this informed consent was a major issue raised in testimony. It was testified by many dentists that fluoride reduces tooth decay and that the poor would suffer if it was discontinued in the water. And there's a point to that for sure. This issue could be resolved, though, with maybe funded topical programs through organizations like Enity Care, and also through education and maybe school programs. It was also pointed out that fluoride is not needed to make drinking water safe. So the question is, why do so many European countries refuse to use it? I just read recently that Denmark has probably the best teeth, and they're opposed to this. But anyway, yes, fluoride is a blessing when taken properly. Even in Lockham County, only Linden fluoridates water. You don't see it in Ellingham or the other communities here. And only Anacortes in Skagit and San Juan County counties are the only ones, okay? Just these two. So not everyone is the same when it comes to toxin buildup, as we've heard from those with, like, thyroid issues. The EPA recently is coming up with new and stricter rules regarding drinking water and releasing chemicals that are called forever chemicals that harm fish and also the environment. So, but the main issue that drives my decision to vote for the removal of fluoride from Linden's drinking water is the issue of freedom of choice and informed consent. And so I would be for the removal.
Mr. Bell? Thank you, Mayor Perez.
Because you know where Mark is.
I would also like to applaud the population of our city as we came together to debate this topic. It was done civilly, it was done well. And it's, that's not always easy on a topic where there's gonna be a winner and there's gonna be a loser. That often brings out the worst in communities. And I was very glad to see the way that we brought this to the table and discussed it. I'm looking forward to the, I think it's great the way we're hearing out tonight as well. That being said, the continuously medicating of our population with fluoride without their consent is a fact I strongly believe should end. On that note as well, I look to the benefits that does bring to our teeth. And that's something that, and we now, we're in an era, we're in a time where the access and the affordability of fluorinated oral products is easy to come by. There's times where I feel like it's tough to not find a toothpaste that has fluoride in it. And I think by all accounts, that's the better way to talk if they apply that.
Thank you, Jesus.
Fluoride is a toxin. So many studies published by the National Institute of Health-
I just wanna cry.
-come down to when, not that it is a toxin, not that it's not a toxin, but when and what level does it become toxic? If you start having, what's a, John Jemore or percent, we're trying to, 0.7 per million? Or some four?
Yeah, points, it was, from that stuff, we're on the-
Point seven.
Point four is what we have here.
Yeah. I think I've read numerous studies where you just look into that four parts per million or eight parts per million, and the obvious signs of fluorosis and negative skeletal fluorosis become, become clear. So it's not, it's not, and also neurological problems as well. It's not a question that it's not good for our bodies, it's at what level does it help our teeth without reaching those negative levels? Sulfur fluoride is a common, not pesticide, human, human agents. And what I'm thinking about that, the, what stood out to me is not, it's oxygen, it's two oxygens, two fluorides, and it's held together by sulfur. And those, it's not the sulfur that does the job of killing the pests, it's the fluoride. It's, as it breaks apart, it's the fluoride that causes the problems on the nervous system. Obviously, that's respiratory, as that's perceived, but it's, the action's still there. Yeah, so I will be, I would be in favor of removing this one, Mark. Oh, I jump up with Mark's idea that brand product. If we did pursue something like that, I would see much more of a benefit to turning that around. Because if we're gonna offer medication for free for our community, why not offer that at specific drinking companies or water installations? Why, why medicate your entire water system?
Here, here. What a great idea.
Thank you.
That is the smartest thing I've heard.
Crossing off my page, everything that everyone else said. Please give me a little grace here. So the last couple of meetings, we've had a lot of people speak for this, we've heard a lot of emails, mostly some of the other council members, and then approached by some members of the public. The majority that I have spoken with or approached me wants to continue fluoride, which has been my experience with this. But this, a lot of this reminds me, last year I attended the American, or excuse me, the Association of Washington City's Conference in Spokane with council member Len, Lenigan. And the, you remember the closing, there was a lecture at the very end. I'm gonna read the way it was written, column BS, "The Art of Skepticism." And what that closing report was, was as a city leader on a council, it's so difficult to figure out with social media the way it is, and all the studies, it's so difficult to figure out what is really the truth. I'm not a dentist. I'm not a specialist or professional in any way having to deal with fluoride. I think both sides of this debate were to say, "Our side is to write in yours, your side is to write in ours," and back and forth. And I don't know if the truth is. I've always been a fluoride kid. No cavities, right? So when this started, I tended to believe in fluoride. But I don't know that it doesn't cause harm. I don't know that. And like some of the other counselors have mentioned, choice becomes important. All the time that people were speaking, I was up here keeping record, and over 40 times, the word "choice" or "decision" was used. "Give me a choice. I should have the right to choose. I wanna decide for myself. Let me choose for my family. Why do I have the right to make my own decision? I wanna choose." I completely agree with that. Three months ago, went to the Public Works Committee meeting. I, before we, this debate really started here the last few weeks, I had an idea. And I went to the Public Works Committee. It was a time when that lawsuit was hot and heavy, and we were waiting for some type of decision, which I don't think there still has been, correct?
No, there's still, the judge still has it.
Well, I brought this idea so that everyone's on the same page with what I've suggested. I went to Public Works, and I suggested that we look into and purchase a reverse osmosis system that can be fitted into our water system. What that would do is that allows complete choice. That allows choice for those that don't want fluoride. That also provides choice for those that do want to continue fluoride. There's, you know, the court case that we're talking about, there's been numerous court cases, and I don't think there's ever been- and I don't think there's ever been a determination this as bad as it's been. So I only introduced this planning in tonight. I propose again that we purchase and set up a small-scale reverse osmosis system for those residents that don't want fluoride in their water. I think they have that right to not drink it. I don't think that I have the right to make them have to do that. I believe that we should, when we do this, if we do this, that we have two locations, one on the east side of town, one on the west side of town, downtown and central Linden.
Yeah, that's crazy. It looks like a third world country.
Geographically, I think that perhaps Public Works would be good site, and perhaps into the water treatment plant or City Hall.
That's harebrained.
I can give you details on the systems really briefly, and this would be almost a bit of a test to see. There's a small system that purchased and installed is roughly twelve thousand dollars. That's roughly zero point zero 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 two seven percent of our annual budget. A large volume system is roughly twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars installed. So double that, zero point zero zero zero, right? So I think this is physically responsible. It gives a choice to everybody. It's timely, this wouldn't take us long to do. And we can measure and see what the interest is without an election, or excuse, not an election, I'm sorry, a letter vote. We could actually track, is this being used regularly, frequently, or not? It would be used for the card system, like we have at City Hall, so that paying Linden water residents have a card, you get the water free. That keeps people that aren't paying out, thus avoids gifting of public funds for the city. I would propose that we do that, that we think about this seriously. Everyone here said the word "choice." Many, many people out there said the word "choice." This is what I'm for, choice for our drinking water.
Who wants to get up in the morning?
Thank you.
And go get water out of them.
So, yeah, before, I'm gonna comment. Well, I'll get a book so I can comment. Um, evidence that I have to keep thinking about is, first of all, I think what Mr. Bell, or Mr., yeah, Mr. Bell said is that, where's the evidence that people in Linden are worse off? And I did, I looked at Linden and Ferne, I love to look at Linden and Ferne a lot because we're both roughly the same size and I think similar populations, so. And Linden has, of our population, thirty-three percent of our population is over sixty-five, and in Ferne, twenty-two percent is over sixty-five. I go, is it fluoride? I mean, some people would argue that's fluoride, but I'm not gonna say it is, but we're living as long as anybody or longer, and so to say that our fluoride is killing us or doing something bad, it's a bit of a stretch in my mind. And then, I know, we're all physically conservative here, and so then I look at Ferne, and I count up all the dentists, and there's seventeen at my count, but let's just call it, maybe if you, I'll call it sixteen for easy math, because Linden has six. So there's ten more dentists in Ferne than Linden. And I talked to Mr. Linsen today, and he mentioned that his buddies in Michigan, it costs, an average practice is one point two million. So if there's ten dentists less in Linden than there is in Ferne, that's twelve million dollars worth of money going out to dentists in Ferne that's not going out to dentists in Linden. Okay, let's say my math's wrong, and there's, it's half that. It's still, we don't trip over six million dollars a year for our citizens. That's serious money in my mind, and maybe it's intended, I don't know. So that's one point two million. I know I work very hard for this group to get one point two million dollar grants that occur once, not annually. And so there's a financial decision here as well, and I know we all say there's plenty ways to get to fluoride, but when you look at the broader communities, they aren't using it. And I don't know if that's education, I don't know what it is, they aren't using it, and their dental health is decreasing because of that.
How do you know that? There's no proof.
And I know, we say fluoride, or chlorine has to be added because it keeps the water clean, but it's also for public health, and if dentistry isn't public health, I don't know what is. So we can make a lot of arguments, I just, and that's why I wanna try Mr. Walrath's idea first, and give it a whirl, and see if it works, and see what happens, because we know how hard it is to get that kind of money in our community, and just to say by this decision it goes away.
Thank you, Gary.
But I don't get a vote, but I get a say.
Right at this moment, I wanna make a motion to direct the staff and legal attorney to draft the ordinance to rescind and replace ordinance thirteen point oh four point four four zero, called Fluoridation Authorized, which is ordinance three seventy from nineteen fifty-nine, now authorizing the discontinuation of fluoride injection into the city's water supply.
Second motion, is there a second?
Second.
You move me second, now discussions.
I'd like to make an amendment to Councilor Cody's motion. First point of my amendment is that staff would be instructed to use the rest of our supply of fluoride until it runs out. I think we have three to four months of inventory, from what I understand. Second would be is that the equipment, the fluoridation equipment needs to be left in place at the water treatment plant for a minimum of five years, and takes council action at that point or anytime after to remove it. And the third is that we would instruct staff to come up with twenty thousand dollars a year, or look for ways to spend twenty-five thousand dollars a year to support fluoridation efforts in the local community in lieu of us taking it out of our, out of the water supply.
They don't need it, we got that from the government.
Twenty-five thousand, is there a reason you pick that up?
I thought it was a reasonable amount for, for that, that number's out there for discussion, but I felt it was reasonable, and maybe it's gonna be supporting a organization that helps lower people in dental care.
They already have that in place. They already have that in place.
So you've made an amendment that would use up existing inventory, keep equipment for five years, and use twenty-five thousand to support fluoride education or fluoride use in the community in other ways than adding it to the water? Is there a support for that amendment?
There was also that it can be moved without council action.
Oh, yeah, can what? No. Can't take the equipment out without council action?
So what are you seeing us do with that twenty-five grand?
We give some. Walk around schools handing out fluoride treatments.
I thought that was, no, I can honestly, I thought that was a prescription.
Yes.
I'm just asking that we come back and look for ways to support it in different ways, and whatever we decide on as a budget to figure, that would be it. Probably take some suggestions from somebody in order to know how to do it.
So, is there a support for the amendment? I support the amendment. Alright, so now we'll have discussion on the amendment here.
John, so on the, on the part about using up what we have, can we not just return it to our supplier?
I don't know the answer to that one. I have not asked the supplier to take it back.
How much do we have on hand?
We have about three, four months' supply.
Okay, what's that cost?
I would guess, once they've sold it, they don't wanna do it.
Of course they don't. It's a toxin. Toxic waste.
I think we got the health issue. I mean, we don't know who we're gonna take care of or whatever.
Yeah, that's true. That's fine.
Alright, any other discussion on the amendment, but that would add those three additional criteria.
So this is on council, Linsen's?
Yeah, see, see what?
Not on the water.
Prefer. So the first, the first two, I have, I completely agree with, I guess the twenty-five thousand, I'm just, I have the same questions that we have, you know.
I guess if you approve, if you approve the amendment and you think passes, then we'll figure out if we can do it. If we can't do it, we'll have to report back, but that's, his goal is to have some kind of an education for it in the community.
I think you can provide education, even if it's not fluoride direct.
And in fair discussion here, I would just ask one more time, before we make a decision in ordinance, that we consider there's an option here, it gives choice on both sides.
This is not the Bureau, it's just work.
Give me a choice. So I'll say.
Do you know, I mean, yeah, I'm sorry, do you know, Mark, do you know if, if it can be the other way? So that people are bathing in fluoride and doing what they're, I don't think you're on fluoride, but I mean, can you, then, then you're not competing with clean water as well?
If we take fluoride, we're competing with them.
No, we're not.
No, we're just, we're just giving people.
No, that's right.
It still has fluoride, it's still all over. I, you know, I have a osmosis system in my house. And I like putting, you know, what about that? So I don't have that. I have a fluoridate throughout the house and all everything else free of drinking water. Yes, ma'am. Not being, not being hurt has never been a problem. Um, I would say that, do you know it can be the other way? Can you, for those people with young kids, if they wanted to get fluoridated water?
I'd be all over that. I've never heard of a system that doses fluoride into drinking water, I mean, you have an ambulance, like. Type it yourself, right? And I don't know of any old system that's.
You know, I'm brave enough. You're welcome.
Do it, you can wait. Uh, but that's.
They already have it, it's called toothpaste.
Offer you an official, how about an official, I don't know.
Sure.
I would, I would imagine for twenty-five thousand dollars, we could have a drinking fountain with fluoridated water in these little schools.
Yeah, I, there's other ways you could do it, I mean, you could mix it like by the gallon, and you'd make a thousand gallon batch.
But the dosing problem, that's very critical. You can't just decide that, well, we're just gonna put fluoride in somebody's water, because, I mean, the CDC, and, I mean, this is four to seven parts per million, I mean, who's gonna do that?
So.
We do it because we have the equipment.
But it's both.
Well, that's the problem. That's what I'm asking.
And I think is we, even though I would, I wanna keep fluoride, I would think we could also benefit by just educating, offering perhaps alternatives. Like I was saying, in Europe, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the countries that were listed is, they don't allow it in water. Nope, it's in their salt. They study it all in their salt. So they're still ingesting it the same way, just in their salt. It's naturally occurring. It's in milk, it's, that's one of the things, unfortunately, we don't work with it. So we have to see from our European partner partners, the additive when they put fluoride in their water or in their milk. I mean, it's just common. There are other ways to get the fluoride, if we wanna look at.
Many ways.
Councilor Linsen didn't have this sort of concept, but I don't think if we budgeted it for twenty-five thousand dollars at this point, and then we come to the conclusion later, that would necessarily be a bad thing. After all, we just accrued half a million dollars for a recreational facility roof without knowing that we're gonna pay for it, so twenty-five seems pretty small.
Yeah, what the hell.
Just one comment on Brent's suggestion of using up the fluoride that we have. I, I, yeah, if we don't use it up, we can't even get rid of it, because it's a toxic. And so who's gonna take it? That's the problem.
Exactly.
I actually, you can't get rid of it, but it's not inexpensive, because somebody's gotta haul it, somebody's gotta take it away, somebody's gotta use it. When I, to like the Councilor Linsen's motion or amendment is, it does give people time to seek out alternatives. So it's not like, hey, you cut us tomorrow. It's like, okay, in four months, whatever that period of time is, people who want fluoride for their teeth, you, you need to seek out alternatives, whether that's going to the dentist, getting the bill, whatever we come up with. But it does give them time to change.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this follows what I was told, but would you be willing to amend it to, for that twenty-five thousand dollars, just be towards promoting oral health in our community? Is that what, okay.
Yeah, just wanna get, get off the hook at this point.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Mark Walrath, that using it for education as opposed to adding it to the water? Brent agreed that that was okay, you need to agree, because you seconded his motion. Or if he, if Brent, if he says he accepts it, but if he doesn't accept it, then it stays the way it was.
I will accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, alright, so now is, the twenty-five thousand is for education, fluoride education in the community?
Or, or, or health, okay, or, or health.
I'd like to call for the question. That's on just the amendment, alright?
I, well, technically that means we have to vote whether we're gonna vote to stop discussion.
We have the three, have three pro, three against to call the motion, or call the question.
I understand it was to go to, I'm gonna just ask, is there any more comment on the amendment? Then we'll vote on the amendment, which is, you know what it is. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so the amendment carries. Now back to the main motion, which is to remove, and there's a correction, ordinance is three seventy-one, not three seventy.
Well, three seventy, and then there's a one, there's a double S, and then a one, and then a nineteen fifty-nine. So that's the way, and the double S, I think you meant it was codified or something.
No, it's ordinance three seventy-one, section one, which was originally adopted in nineteen fifty-nine. That ordinance is currently codified, it would be just, oh, thirteen oh four four forty. But it is, it is ordinance three seventy-one.
Okay. So we have that correction on the record. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, four, three.
Four, three.
Praise the name of the Lord.
Alright, so we have our instructions, we move forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gishian.
I'm just waiting for, get to the order or whatever.
Hallelujah. It's getting removed. Oh, praise God. Alright, thanks guys. Love y'all.